Good afternoon, and well, we were up. I don't know if we are, you know, but there we are. Good afternoon, and welcome to the July 31st Clearwater City Council Work Session. I want to remind everyone that during work session that there are no public comments, and we appreciate in advance everyone adhering to that. We're going to start out with our clerk, there are two presentations, and have our clerk, Rosemary Call, take over. They're swearing in of our new police officers.
Good afternoon, everybody. Michael Wall, Clearwater Police Department. I'd like to welcome everybody to our eight new recruits that we have bringing on board right now. First one we have is Kenneth Casey Jr. He's a graduate of Warren Central High School in Indiana. He previously worked for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department as a police officer from 2017 to 2023. Next, we have Ryan Chandler. Ryan received his bachelor's degree from American Military University. He served in the Coast Guard and continues to serve in the Coast Guard Reserves. Ryan previously worked for the Citrus County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff from 2021 to 2023. Next, we have Christopher Elliott. Christopher is a graduate from Lakewood High School. He previously worked for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office as a detention deputy, and also served the United States Marine Corps as an amphibious assault crew member. Next, we have Michael Keltzer. Michael received an associate degree from Community College of Baltimore County. He previously worked for the Howard County Sheriff's Office in Maryland as a deputy sheriff from 2021 to 2023. Next, we have Matthew Peterson. He received a bachelor's degree from Florida State University. He previously worked for the Denver Police Department as a police officer from 2018 to 2023. Next, we have Jason Rhea. He attended Oakton Community College in Illinois. He previously worked for the Chicago Police Department as a police officer from 2021 to 2023. Next, we have Brittany Roy. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of Rhode Island. She previously worked as a police officer for the Mill Creek Police Department in Washington State, the Seattle Police Department, and the NYPD. And next, we have Rocco Russo. He received his bachelor's degree in criminology from Penn State University. He previously served the United States Marine Corps. Welcome.
I state your name.
I, George R. Housler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of Government.
The Constitution of Government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
In the Charter and Laws.
The Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
The City of Clearwater.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Charter and Laws.
Under the Charter and Laws.
City of Clearwater.
The City of Clearwater.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
On which I'm now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
Congratulations. 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 You're welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for joining us. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's nice to talk to you. Congratulations to all our new recruits. We know you'll have a great career. All right, next, we have the swearing in of Chief Eric Gandy.
I, Eric Gandy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of Government.
The Constitution of Government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
And the Charter and Laws.
And the Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Clearwater.
The City of Clearwater.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Charter and Laws.
Under the Charter and Laws.
The City of Clearwater.
The City of Clearwater.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
On which I'm now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
If you might indulge me for a minute, I know the agenda is packed, as is this room, so I'll be brief, but I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to a few of you today. I was thinking about it as the officers were sworn in, and you may well have witnessed a future Chief of Police being sworn in today, and I thought that was pretty cool. So I'm here really to provide some acknowledgements and some thanks to the mayor, to this council, the city manager, to city management, and to the community, and everyone who has supported me and allowed me to be here before you today, and for that, I thank you. I also need to thank my coworkers over the last three decades, my peers, and my mentors. It's guidance from these folks and little bits of information that I glean along the way that has made me the person I am today. I also want to thank our community, because without the community's support, law enforcement ceases to function effectively. The community determines what our mandates are. The community determines what they want us to do, and the community is a critical piece of any law enforcement community. Finally, I want to thank my Clearwater Police Department family. We've been through a lot of ups and downs over the years. We've learned from our successes and unfortunately, our failures, and I think that's critical to remember, and that you can take away from all of those things and learn from them. And finally, my family. It's been an interesting 30 years. They're up for some more, and for that, I appreciate their support unwavering, and I recall my mother being at my first swearing in over 30 years ago, and I really appreciate that level of support. So I want to provide you and the community with some assurances. Clearwater Police Department's got a reputation of being a community-oriented policing department with a lot of trust in this community and tremendous amount of community engagement. I want to assure all of you and assure this community, as I mentioned earlier, the community is a critical part of what we do, and they determine our parameters. And certainly, this community is critical to us, and I want to ensure the community and the council that I'll do my level best to ensure their safety. I'll do my best to ensure the safety of our officers, and I think we do that with the continued engagement, enhanced engagement, and training and a wide variety of topics for our officers, to include defensive tactics, but primarily communication. Communication is key, and in this era of vitriol and divisiveness, I think it's really important to remember that as a Clearwater Police Officer and as the Clearwater Police Department, we have to remain apolitical and treat everyone the same. Thank you.
We look forward to working with you and all your new officers. Okay, it's time now for Parks and Recreation, item 3.1.
Discuss 2023 Rock and Roll Marathon Race Course Route and Impacts.
Want to give a minute?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Chris Pitt, Parks and Recreation, City Manager. Today's item from Parks and Recreation is more of an update to you all. This is a rather unique event in that it is year four of a five-year agreement. However, this will be the first year of the event. So February 11th of 2020, the city council entered into a five-year agreement with the competitor group to operate the Rock and Roll Marathon event. The first two years, 2020 and 2021, obviously were canceled due to COVID, and then last year Hurricane Ian made landfall on the day that this was scheduled, so that event also had to be canceled. So this will be the first of the first year of the fourth time trying for this. A couple of the highlights of this agreement, just to bring back to your awareness, is there'll be multiple races, multiple events going on, so it's on Saturday, October 7th, and the half marathon is on October 8th on the Sunday. So on that Saturday, will be a Kid's Rock Race, a Doggy Dash, and a 5K event, and on the half marathon event, they are almost already at capacity, which for the contract was 7,500 runners, so that's anticipated to be a sold-out event here very, very soon. So with that kind of impact of 7,500 runners on our roadways, we wanted to get that back on your radar for our internal communications as well as external communications, so we can let the public know what to expect with that kind of runners on our roadways. So with that, the current course that we have, and we have all these timelines down from every .1 mile all the way to the end of it, of what the first runner expected time is, to when the last runner expected time is, and then when the roadways will open back up. So we'll be providing that information, and we'll have it in case anyone calls or asks what they can expect. We have it all the way down to that kind of level of detail. We've also learned quite a lot from the last four years of planning it, to where we hope this is a very seamless first year of the event, and I'll just run through very quickly the slides here we have. So this Rock and Roll Marathon event is really held in signature cities across the country, so a few places, Nashville, Manila in the Philippines, Mexico City, Las Vegas, Washington, DC. So Clearwater is up there in the top end of this kind of a race as far as a destination. We have, there is music incorporated into the race course, as well as a headlining event at the finish line, and then it's operated by the Ironman Group, so obviously a big name in the world of outdoor running events. Demographics is interesting. It's over 70% are females, a very young average runner age, too, is 47, and you can see why this is such a popular event, is because it brings so many people in from outside of the area. It's almost 50% of the runners are traveling in. Also, that's just the running number of 7,500, so when we're talking attendance, it's usually about two and a half per every runner that will come with them, so we're talking about significant hotel traffic business as well. Some of the ways that are being communicated out, this is mostly on promoting of the event, but with this being sold out, has obviously done a good job of letting the community know about how to get into the race. What we'll focus more on is today, in the next couple of minutes, is just how we're letting the public know about the impact. So the race is going to begin at Coachman Park, which right there makes less of an impact than what we were planning last year with beginning and ending at the half marathon, specifically on Clearwater Beach. Now that Coachman Park is open, it offers a great natural place for us to be able to get a lot of people together and be able to have that race go over the bridge first part of the morning, and for this 5K event, be returning back on the trail, going down the helix into the park, resuming normal traffic operations by 9:00 AM. For the half marathon date, similar concept, as you can see, as we're going over the bridge first, that means the bridge will be the first thing to be reopened, so whereas in the past, starting it on the bridge just left, you know, more time that we would have closures on the bridge. It speeds everything up. So traffic patterns, as we say, should all be back to normal by 12:15. Our Clearwater Police Department has worked hand in hand with the organizers, as well as a lot of the other municipalities that are included along this course, just to make sure that we offer the safest and best race that we can. Some of the communications that go out is there's mailers that go out to everyone that's within a certain radius of the race course, so they're giving impact notices, and the marathon event actually handles this aspect. They have a community relations staff person tasked with these things. And then the City of Clearwater, also, our public communications team takes on a very active role with websites, text to subscribes, email alerts, the auto dialers that go out, as well as all of our social media, letting people know, again, even more ways that we're getting the word out to people about what they can expect and what the closures look like. So with that, just again, wanted to offer that as an update. It's a very big event. We're very excited about it, but it does provide some impacts we wanted you to be aware of.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Keltzer? Yes?
Thank you. I've run that Rock and Roll Marathon a number of times, like, let's see, Phoenix and San Diego, and I just had, is the full marathon on Sunday just going to be the double on the half marathon, those 13?
So this event, the half marathon is the longest. There's not a pool, it's just one loop around for a half.
Okay, okay. And will they be using Coachman Park for their headliner at the end of the race?
Yes, they will. So they're going to be starting that load-in on that Tuesday before the Saturday race, so there'll be registration going on within the park, starting on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so there will be an influx of people coming in to check out their merchandise. So the race is just one component. They bring out a lot of other vendors and things for people to engage with, so that'll be starting that entire week, and then there will be a concert following the race, ending on that Sunday.
And the concert's in the park, but not in the amphitheater?
As of right now, that's their plan, yes.
Okay, and then are there wheelchairs in this race that go first?
I don't know the answer to that. I would imagine we'll have...
Just wondering, I mean, they usually finish first anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
And they do plan entertainment throughout, like, almost at every mile? Because not often, it's not always at every mile?
It's not, especially this year, so one of the concerns that the City of Bel Air had was music in their city, so our police department has worked with their chief, and that was one of the concessions they asked for, is to avoid placing music in their city.
Okay.
So there are different points that there will be live music, and specific impact notices go out to those locations that are going to have live music.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, I guess so. Go ahead.
I have never run this marathon or any other marathon, but I may have had you run in front of me in San Diego when I was living there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and I remember being annoyed by the fact that this was disruptive, and then I remembered right after that, that it really wasn't that big of a deal. It was over pretty quick, you know, so, you know, I'm looking forward to a great success from this.
Thank you. Yeah, so the way we have it planned is there's really a parade that follows the last runner, which is cleaning up and making sure that when the roadways are set to reopen 30 minutes after the last runner goes through, that it's clean and ready for normal operations.
Great. Anything else? Yes, sir.
So this has been a long time coming because of the delays and everything. Is the Dog and Arrow Race, would they have absorbed into this race?
It was. That was when this agreement went through, back in 2020, that was...
Okay, so it's the same thing, just moving forward? Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you. 3.2.
Authorize a general maximum price proposal to course construction for the restoration of the Ream Wilson Trail pedestrian bridge.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, members. I'm Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. The Ream Wilson Trail, as you know, is a popular east-west trail connection for Safety Harbor, for Clearwater Beach, and for Tampa. The trail was constructed over a period of 20 years. I was here during those 20 years, and it was completed in 2005 with the bridge over McMullen Road. During the last structural inspection, the bridge inspection that we had by our engineer of record, Bill Reinhardt, they recommended several items that we needed to do for prevented maintenance and repairs. Basically, it's to restore the bridge, and it'll prolong the life of the bridge. This proposal is for all the work needed to make the necessary repairs and the maintenance of the bridge. This is a 180-day contract and will be completed by February 2024. During construction, users of the trail will be detoured around it, but they'll still be able to use the trail. They will go through basically EDC Moore, 5, 6, and 7. Basically, those ball fields have a trail that actually can come out, and then they will be routed down through Del Oro Park. With that, I'm available for any questions.
So the bridge will be closed itself?
Yes, it will be closed for almost three months, or six...
So anybody...
180 days.
Okay. Anyone riding their bike then from the Carpenter Complex, and then they get down there, they're going to have to cross McMullen Booth then, right?
That is correct. They will cross McMullen Booth at the traffic signal there on Drew Street.
Okay. The other question I have is, it's been 18 years. If we put this million, almost two, in, how much longer do they think this is going to be...
The bridge itself should last for 50 years, so you figure we've done, it's gone about 20, so this will help stay. If you don't do anything with it, it's simply rust, and actually, the cage over it will be totally replaced because it is all rusted out, and it just needs to be done.
All right, any other questions or comments? No consent?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Cader. Okay, let's go to Police Department, 4.1, please.
Affirm an agreement between the City of Clearwater and the School Board of Pinellas County for providing the continuation of school resource officer program.
Good afternoon, Michael Wall, Police Department. This item is an agreement continuing the school resource officer program at Clearwater High School, Countryside High School, Oak Grove Middle School, and Clearwater Fundamental School for a three-year period commencing July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2026. The School Board of Pinellas County and the City of Clearwater began contractual agreements back in 2018 for the city to provide law enforcement to officers at Clearwater High School, Countryside High School, two officers, one officer at Oak Grove Middle, and one at Clearwater Fundamental during the regular school year. The assigned officer provides site security, instruction, and law education, serves as a resource person, conducts investigations, maintains the peace, and makes arrests if necessary to provide support services. The annual cost of the salaries and benefits of six officers over a one-year period is estimated at $651,028. The total reimbursement from the school board is $68,251 for each of the six SROs assigned to schools, so the total payable in this agreement is $409,507.20. Additional funding needed of $241,520.8 will be provided by a transfer of general fund revenues budgeted into Police Department's fiscal 2023-2024 budget year. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
Is this the same amount we paid last year, or has it increased at all?
It's a three-year contract, and the school board gives the annual percentage raises in there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Hold on. So the school board gives raises to our police officers?
The officers are employed by the city, but they pay for, like I mentioned, they pay $68,251. That's how we're getting the $409,507 over that three-year span.
So what happens is that when they give raises to their employees, the amount of that increase comes to us as well.
Okay.
It doesn't cover the 100% cost of the officer, so it doesn't give a raise to our officer, it just reduces the amount we have to subsidize.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Consent? Thank you. 4.2, please.
4.2, Countryside Christian Academy. Good afternoon, Michael Wall, Clearwater Police Department. The item is, on this agreement, I'm sorry, the item with is an agreement between the City of Clearwater and the Countryside Christian Academy and Preschool Pinellas County for the implementation of a police safety officer program for a five-year period commencing August 1st, 2023 through June 2nd of 2028. Earlier this year, Countryside Christian Academy Preschool requested the public safety services of the Clearwater Police Department on their campus to accomplish the goal of providing adequate safety and security for students, faculty, and staff during the school year. In order to accomplish this request, the Police Department seeks approval for the following: Increase FTE by .8 to hire a permanent part-time officer, purchase the vehicle and all related equipment necessary to outfit the vehicle, purchase equipment necessary to outfit the additional personnel. The annual cost of $129,958.41 for the one assigned officer encompasses salary, benefits, equipment, vehicle, supervision, relief expenses, and higher expenses. The entire sum of the annual related costs will be paid by the Countryside Christian Academy Preschool. This is a program that we target larger schools with it, not for the smaller base schools. There's alternatives for that. And at that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on this item?
I do. So I had a number of questions about this one. So I understand that we partner with our public schools, our county, Pinellas County Schools, to provide the SROs that are mandated by our legislature, right? And so we cost share in that. The legislature left it up to us to decide how schools are going to pay for that, right? They're partnering with our municipalities. Okay. So now, we have private schools that are asking for us to provide SRO officers, and this one is offering to cover 100% of the costs.
Correct.
Right?
Covering everything.
Everything. Administration, vehicle, uniforms.
Uniforms.
All that stuff.
Yes, sir.
And brand-new vehicles, right?
Correct.
That are expensed over five years.
Correct.
And then in the contract, they're, you know, expected to, you know, provide security for the school, park the car out front, and be available for extracurricular activities, right?
Correct.
I think so. They also had in their contract that this police officer may provide instruction, teach lessons.
That, correct.
Well, and provide some counseling and/or guidance. And I just wonder a little bit about, you know, I'm a licensed, I have a degree in education, an educational leadership, a master's, but it causes a little pause that a police officer is going to be teaching and/or offering counseling. Do they have a teaching degree, a license in counseling? I mean, I suppose that's up to the school that's contracting, but if, you know, if there's a worst-case scenario and there's some kind of charge of malpractice or something, is that the city's responsibility?
Well, let me first answer by the counseling. I would prefer the counseling more as a mentorship-type program than I would counseling. A lot of times, you'll encounter students that are having difficult times at school, and the officer will serve as a mentor, as a person they can rely on to build a relationship with. But I wouldn't really define it as counseling. And when you go to the part of education, that's more of an agreement between usually the principal and the officer, and that's usually just talking about what a police officer does, their day-in, day-out jobs, and maybe some brief information about, you know, when you're old enough, what happens if you get stopped at a traffic stop, what to do, what not to do. It's that type. I wouldn't say it's teaching the Constitution or Miranda to that type of student, so hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. I just, and I kind of thought that that's probably what it meant, and so it's more like, you know, I would change the word counseling to mentoring maybe, or the instruction to a guest speaker, like, if you participate in the Great American Teach-In and you come in and teach about your profession or things like that for a day, but it's certain, I mean, are our officers expected to teach a class during fourth period every day or something like that?
It's not a program like that. They even do that in high schools. They do, they do work in classrooms that help talk about riding, safety, you know, buckle up, don't use your phone. It's all stuff that's relative to that type of stuff.
Okay. And then are you anticipating an increase in requests from private schools? And then, are you anticipating an increase in requests from private schools to have our law, our officers in their buildings?
Well, we're strictly keeping this officer-type position to large schools like this. This has a large enrollment.
Okay. Do we have a number, like over eighteen hundred or something?
They have four fifty approximately.
Okay. So high schools, of course, this is a-
Upper-type schools.
Okay.
They have four fifty, including their preschool.
Okay.
That's the goal of it. And there's other programs through school safety that they can do, the guardianship program, and they can do school safety officers.
Okay. Are regularly-employed officers going to work this nine-month contract, or are we hiring others?
This will be an outside person, that's generally someone that's a retired, usually, a retired law enforcement professional.
Comes back just for nine months?
It's a five-year contract.
Right.
But, you know, they will come back for that time, correct.
Okay. And then, so if they get, if part of this contract pays for a new vehicle, I mean, this is, you know, this is not meant to be micromanaging, but if we get a new vehicle for an SRO, I hope that new vehicle goes to our police officers that are moving around in the city all day, rather than parked at a school for the officer who's working inside the building.
We would, that would be the goal of it. The only challenge we have right now is getting a vehicle. We're several, eight months to a year out, so we would get them a vehicle that's appropriate for that, and we would make sure that they have a-
That type of work. Okay. And then, is there any concern when you say that perhaps you're going to hire retired officers to come and fill these positions? So if they're older and the city pays for salary and would pay for benefits and insurance, if we're hiring back older people, does that impact our insurance workers' comp, things like that, because we're self-funded? I mean, I know it's only one officer now, you know?
That, I could answer. I don't know the cost related to that, but I can tell you that a lot of times the people, they're retired, some people retire twenty years, and they're still relatively in their forties and fifties, and those are the ones that come back somewhere. Sometimes, I can't answer, unfortunately, the cost. I can look that up and get back with you on that, but-
I mean, it's just a, you know, it would be like an actuarial thing, but, okay, I just, it's, it's just interesting to see private schools, you know, wanting the city to absorb those responsibilities at their cost. I get it. But it's like, how do you say yes to this one, and how many more might be down the line? And can we handle that?
That, we will take that as we get it. Like I said, this is, this one and another one were in the works, the other one fell through, it was this one, but like I said, we're keeping it very strict towards larger high school-type arenas.
Okay. And this one just happens to have a preschool, though. It must be preschool through twelve.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I would just assume that it's only gonna be the larger ones that could afford this anyway.
That's correct.
And that most, as you said, a lot of officers retire after twenty years in their forties, and that they're more than healthy enough to do a position, fill a position such as this.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Five point one, please, Public Works.
A private professional service agreement and work order with Wanamaker Jensen Architects for the Long Center pool renovation.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Walker, Senior Professional Engineer with Public Works. A little history, back in October twenty-one, the city identified, identified isolated areas of corrosion on the interior structural framing of the long center's indoor pool, otherwise called a nadatorium. You hear that word nadatorium a lot. Shortly thereafter, during January twenty-two, the city hired a structural engineer to visually inspect the accessible areas of the nadatorial framing. Four areas were recommended to be repaired immediately by welding. While the remaining corrosion repair sites would wait until a more thorough inspection could be completed, that inspection would require the pool to be shut down for a few weeks. The full pressing lab repairs were completed in August of twenty twenty-two. During the inspection and repair operations, it became self-evident that the frame corrosion was a symptom of the nadatorium's poor indoor air quality and inadequate building envelope, that being a lack of insulation of the frame that supports the glass wall and the glass wall itself, which is single pane. The poor air quality root causes were identified as insufficient HVAC capacity to dehumidify and lack of sufficient outdoor air ventilation. With this as an introduction, I'll pass the presentation over to Art.
Art Cader, Parks and Recreation Director. Recognizing that the Long Center pool is over thirty years old and having these types of issues, it became evident that a major repair and renovation was needed. On November of twenty twenty-two, the city issued an RFQ zero eight twenty-three for the design services for the Clearwater Long Center renovations. February twenty twenty-three, the RFQ Selection Committee evaluated three proposals. We've got a proposal from Associated Space Design, Inc., Williams Architects Associates, and Wanamaker Jensen Architects, Inc. And they selected Wanamaker Jensen Architect for these services. With so many options that were available to investigate and the associated cost involved with each option, and if you will recall, some of the options, they're such as actually tear down the existing pool, build a new pool in its place with a covering. It could have been an outdoor pool, in other words, remove the walls and leave the roof structure alone. It could have been to have a removable roof that basically opens up, you know, like these football fields and all. And it could have been just to replace the glass structure the way it is now with the windows. And then the last option was to basically renovate and remodel that area with, basically with walls and a lot of natural light that comes through. And if you will recall, we brought that back because of that, so many options, we did not want to spend that much money, and we asked the council to give us some direction on the options that you wanted to consider. The two that you told us to consider was to maintain the current glass windows surrounding structure. In other words, a structure with all glass. And the second option was to modify the structure by creating a new design incorporating walls and a lot of natural lights. Staff is recommending approval of this professional services contract with WJA to provide lifecycle cost analysis for these two designs, just these two. They're gonna look at life cost analysis, and they will address such items as energy consumption, the longevity, existing conditions of the envelope itself, and provide conceptual plans for both options, give us cost estimates for both options, and the replacement of existing pool equipment, and provide recommendations on upgrading, replacing the existing mechanical system. This phase of the project lasts five months to complete. So in February of twenty twenty-four, the results of these two options will be brought back to the council for a final decision on which design to use before we move forward with a supplemental work order with WJA to complete the project through a hundred percent construction documents. I believe WJA, are they represented today? Yeah, they're represented as well as Jason, Jeff Walker, and myself, and we're available to answer any questions you might have. This is just the first phase of this.
Any questions or comments? No questions? Okay. Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Five point two, please.
A private proposal from Keystone Excavating for Kings Highway over Stevenson's Creek retaining wall.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Ivan Dimitrov, Engineering Manager, Public Works. This proposal is for the replacement of retaining wall which has reached the end of its useful life located near Kings Highway and Stevenson's Creek. The construction for this replacement will take sixty days to complete. Any questions?
Any questions or comments on this item? No? Okay. Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you. Five point three, please.
A private work order to advance engineering and design for the Island Way road improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members again. Ivan Dimitrov, Engineering Manager, Public Works. This work order is for the design for repaving of Island Way Boulevard from the causeway to Palm Island Northeast. Design will take nine months to complete. Repaving of the road will begin after the water main replacement project by Public Utilities is completed, which as I was informed, is scheduled to be completed around spring twenty twenty-five. Questions?
Any questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
So I had a question, a due date for finalization of construction plans. Are you saying that's like nine months from now to finalize the construction plans?
Yes.
Okay. So nine months from now. And so the start date of this project would be sometime next year?
Sometime in the spring of twenty twenty-five, right after Public Utilities completes their water replacement project.
Spring of twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
So this, we're gonna finalize the construction plans early next year, and then we don't start until the following year?
Yes, there's a, there's a separate project run by different departments.
Okay.
So we would like them to complete their project.
Finish first?
Then for us to-
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Okay. So you said Palm Island Northeast, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just past Palm Island Northeast is a bridge going into the next section. Seems like it would be, be better to just take it to that, another hundred feet to the start of that concrete bridge instead of just stopping at Palm Island Northeast.
So the area, the area that's north of that will be milled and resurfaced.
Milled and resurfaced?
Yes, the area north, no, the area north of where this project ends will be milled and resurfaced.
Oh, I see. Because the water project is just up to northeast.
I don't know the exact limits of the water project.
Okay. But both sides going north and south of Palm, of, will be done?
Correct.
Okay. Just checking.
Okay. Anything else? Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you. Five point four, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. Ivan Dimitrov again, Engineering Manager, Public Works. This proposal is for the installation of four demonstration projects along the existing Fort Harrison corridor. The first one is a traffic circle at Palm Bluff. The second is a mid-block crossing just south of England. The third is narrowing of lanes between Cedar and England. And the fourth is repurposing of four lanes to two lanes. And the center is left turn lane from Bel Air to Bellevue. The primary purposes of the modifications are to enhance pedestrian safety corridor aesthetics. These projects can be implemented on a temporary basis and then evaluated to determine positive and negative effects. They will stay in place for a minimum of six months. Ideally, we would like to capture the data from spring break.
Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
So let me preface by saying that the comments I'm about to make are not at all addressed to the staff. This is just my opportunity to express my frustrations with the process. So when I was reading over this, I had a visceral response. It was like rubbing salt on a wound. Because when I expressed concerns over the Drew Street project, I felt that it wasn't, the project that was proposed was not, I thought, the best solution. And my concerns were due to the data. I had concerns about the data, which were supported by the two independent studies. If it was forged ahead, then there was a lot of, you know, heated comments and questioning, you know, safety and all that. So then I was a proponent of a pilot project like this, where we would either use cones, tubes, or striping to put the plan in place, even if it was just on the Clearwater section. Because as I was, I was very clear and on record, I would have really liked to have been proven wrong. And I thought it was an important project, and I wanted to see firsthand. And some of the responses I got was tubes and cones are out of the question, it's too expensive, millions of dollars, because we have to grade it and shave it down and redo the streets, that a computer-generated test was more accurate. And so it was, you know, it was put to the side. So when I look at this, it's exactly what I wanted for Drew. And in this instance, we're doing a traffic, traffic circle, which just that makes some people confused. But a traffic circle with cones to do a medium with tubes, and then do a four lane into a two lane with a turning lane with re-striping. So it's possible of Fort Harrison, seems very simple in Fort Harrison, and the cost is only a hundred and fifteen thousand versus millions. And so before anyone says, well, that's a different thing because, you know, we're sharing the road of Drew, I actually asked for just the streets of Clearwater. So I'm not actually asking for a response, just an opportunity to express my frustration because I can't reconcile the two. To me, it's not logical how hard it is for one street and how quickly and easy it's done. And if we're gonna actually follow that logic of some of the responses that I heard, you know, safety comes first, businesses wanting a fast buck, status quo, does that not apply to Fort Harrison? So I just wanted to go on record to express my frustration, but I'm not exactly, I'm not asking for a response.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'd like a response. If we have staff here, I mean, I'd like a response to those comments and observations.
Okay. Let's have a response.
Here comes Tara.
Hi. Good afternoon, Tara Kivett, City Engineer. Obviously, Fort Harrison is easier. We are in complete control of the whole corridor, so that simplifies things. FDOT did not support the pilot because they felt that they could take a deeper dive in the data, that of course was also recommended, or I think actually was a requirement from the legislation change, that that would be a better pilot in their minds versus this. So we're not going to take that deep dive that is required by legislation for FDOT. Our plans were never to do that. So for us, this is a nice option without having to take that costly deep dive that FDOT is doing on Drew. Fort Harrison has a lower volume, the safety concerns are not as significant on Fort Harrison, especially in this, in this northern portion of the corridor as they are in Drew Street. And then, as far as Drew Street, just our portion, because that is such a small portion at the very end of the major corridor, from an engineering perspective, I truly felt that the pilot would not have been that helpful because the rest of the corridor was not getting changed at all. So this, we're not, we're looking at a creative way to test out some of these, some of the complete street concepts that were done earlier through our planning, planning and development led a study, as a way to kind of test those out and, and kind of almost pitch them. People have been kind of negative to some of the complete street concepts in the past. So this way, we'll get some good internal data, we're definitely gonna be monitoring it, we'll bring some feedback back, and then determine, moving forward, when we design the other phases of this corridor, so south of Jones Street, on whether a traffic circle would be a good option. I hope that clarifies it.
I knew you were gonna say that. But let me ask you a question. So when I asked about re-striping, it seemed like an impossible feat when I asked from FDOT, you know, to shave it down. We're not shaving it down on Fort Harrison, we're just gonna paint it like-
Correct. But FDOT has much stricter standards than we do.
So the area between Bellevue and Bel Air is pretty small, too?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm just frustrated because I, I thought that re-striping was a very feasible and accurate way to test it out as well for Drew Street.
Right. But FDOT would not allow us-
I know. That's why I'm saying I'm expressing my frustration.
Right. See, we can do that, and if there's problems, you know, we'll immediately go out there. If we do have some safety problems with the sandplasting or painting over the striping, then we will have to take a step back and come in and maybe mill and resurface a short section, but I don't envision that. And we are going to do a public outreach effort ahead of this, especially down at the south end where we're narrowing lanes. So we'll put up some beam, variable meshed boards and work with our own in-house public communications to get the information out to the neighborhoods.
Anything else on this one? Yes?
What's the timeline of approval and installation of those configurations?
I'll let Ivan answer that.
I'll have to get back with the contractor and ask him how quickly they can get out there, but it's not a very long process. Once, once, once the proposal is approved, it's not a very long, it's not a long delay. Once, once, once the proposal is approved, it's not a very long, it's not a long delay to get them all there to mobilize.
So within, early this fall, you think they'll be up?
I would imagine so, yeah.
Okay, and then the duration of the pilot study? About how long you think you're going to keep them up?
At least, at least six months.
At least?
Ideally, we want to capture the data during spring break because that's when we see how much traffic.
Okay, and what are you measuring or evaluating in the pilot? What kind of data are you going to be collecting?
I'd have to get back with the, to my EOR on that. But we just want to see how, what the effects are on safety and traffic flow through the corridor once we install these, these devices.
So safety and traffic flow? So, you know, you'll measure crashes or pedestrian, things like, you know?
I'll have, I'll have to get a more detailed response from our engineer.
Okay, and then traffic flow, right, okay. And then how will you determine success or need for modifications? Is there a target something you're looking for or is that come from the other person you're going to? About what you're stud, what you're measuring and studying?
That will come from our engineer.
Okay, okay. Because, yeah, what are we, what's acceptable numbers of whatever you're measuring? Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for including a photo of the temporary traffic circle. Because I was trying to imagine, well, what's that going to look like? Have we done one of these before with cones?
I don't know. Since I've been here with the city, I have not seen it. Maybe somebody else who has been here.
So it seemed like it could be confusing as you're driving down the street there. But it's nowhere near as traffic as the roundabout at the beach, so I'm not worried about it. Just curious.
Well, speaking of that, are you going to put up like extra lighting or make sure the lighting is really good at night for that circle and stuff like that?
I will discuss that with the engineer.
Okay.
Because people coming off those side streets are going to have to know who has the right of way and all that good stuff. There's, there's a stop sign. There's stop signs. The stop sign is going to say, okay, all right. Anything else? Consent, or do you want to talk about it Thursday?
No, I support this just like I supported the last pilot.
Okay. Consent?
Yep.
Thank you, five point five, please.
A supplemental, what, one work order with Atkins North America for community rating system support services.
Good afternoon. Sarah Kessler, Lead Environmental Specialist with the Public Works Department. So this is a supplemental work order for an existing one we have with Atkins. So right now Atkins is helping me with our CRS verification visit. So that means they're going through everything that we've submitted to ISO and FEMA for CRS previously, making sure that we're doing everything that we said we're going to do. So because of the number of flood policies we have in the city, we need to go through that process every three years. So this supplemental work order is going to look at the city a little more comprehensively, look at all of our existing programs and all of our codes, our policies, and look to see if there's, maybe we could tweak some methodology to get more points or if we can add language to our code or, you know, change an ordinance to be able to get more points. We are currently a Class Six, which is a twenty percent savings on flood insurance for our residents that are in the special flood hazard area. So with our verification visit that is ongoing right now, I do not know if we'll stay a Class Six or if we'll improve to a Class Five. I don't know that part of it, but we are just going to use this supplemental work order to assess what, where we, where we can get more points to improve our class.
Okay, any questions or comments on this item? Anyone? No, consent?
Yep.
Thank you. Fire Department, six point one, please.
Approved agreement purchase order with HQE Systems for a severe weather and emergency alert system and support services.
Good afternoon. Dr. Derek Smith, Clearwater, where you see management. The item before you, if approved, will allow the city to enter into contract with HQE Systems Incorporated for the build out and maintenance of an emergency alert and lightning detection system. On August of 2022, RFP thirty dash twenty-two was released. City received five proposals and a public meeting was held on September thirteenth to review those proposals and go through our process. For that process, that targeted that HQE Systems Incorporated provided the best system for what we're looking for, not only for now, but in the future as well. The cost for the system is broken up in several sections. The upfront cost of eight hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred and four and ninety-two cents is part of the construction cost. It includes the software and the hardware, the training and other things, and two years of maintenance. Past the two years, starting at year three, we have seventy-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's going to be that enhanced maintenance package that will come out twice a year, before and after hurricane season. Make sure that the hardware, hardware is still good, but also make sure the software is still good. So if there's a patch, an update, things like that, they'll be able to take care of that. So the eight-year term total for this project is one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-three and six cents. With that, I'm available for questions and our rep is well here.
Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think we talked about this when I did the review over there at the fire station. Is this going to be available to the residents in an app of some sort? That we'd be able to look on it and see where lightning's striking and that kind of thing, or?
If we have our representative here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jamie. I'm the Executive Vice President of HQE Systems. I'm an early warning systems master engineer, probably more so at the bottom of the barrel engineer. But thank you for having me here to answer your question. Yes, the, the system will be available for front-facing for the residents on a mobile app, also on a website as well, because some people don't have a smartphone. So they'll still be able to access a few of the website as well.
Okay, great. I have a question off topic. How did a company like yours end up in Temecula, California? Better, better known as a small wine area.
It is the new Napa Valley. So if you're a wine drinker, we welcome anybody to come out. I guess it's something in the soil. I don't know what it is, but it's similar to Napa Valley, but they, Temecula boasts that we have the best wine in California. But who knows?
Southern California.
Yes, it's Southern California.
Los Angeles, right?
Yes, it's.
Southeast of Los Angeles?
Um, north, slightly north of San Diego. So HQE Systems were a Veterans Affairs Certified Service Disabled Veteran Small Business. All that means is that we went through a rigorous certification process accreditation with the VA, saying that we are who we are and financially capable of doing big contracts with the VA and the federal government. And we're located in Temecula and in Charleston. And we'll more than likely be opening up a satellite office here as well, too.
Great, okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I had a question about, on, on page one of that, of the legislative explanation, there's, what's? So we're paying different amounts in year one, what we get for alert system to include installation training, two years of a full service maintenance support and two years of electronic alerts. And so are those through the phone only? They're not like some loud audio electronic alerts, right? They're just through a mobile device? And then the last bullet says cellular services for the severe warning system is included for all eight years at no additional cost. So I didn't understand, what's the difference between we get two years of electronic alerts, but then you've got severe warning system is included for all eight years? What's the difference?
Okay, so I'll just kind of bubble the overall picture to the top. So the system that you're getting is an outdoor early warning, the speaker system. But in addition to that, what we provide is, because when it comes to emergency management, you want a unified approach to mass communications, right? If you only have outdoors, it's a single point of failure. So as a former Department Energy Incident Commander, we used to have three layers. So in this case, we're providing you with the, the outdoor piece and the electronic piece as well, too. The electronic warning systems we're providing you as a pack in the first two years, really as a grant to you, to the city. Because working with Derek, we understand that life safety is a big concern, a priority for the city. And we want to make sure that you have redundancy in communications. So the electronic learning sys, electronic mass certification, which allows you to do voice calls, SMS text, FEMA, IPo's, social media posts, and the mobile app push notifications, we're providing that to you as a grant for the first two years. And the cellular data piece, we're also actually providing you that as a grant for the eight years as well, too. So that all of that cost, we're soaking that up because we want to make sure that starting this program is started right. So a lot of, a lot of times when new programs are established, there's only a budget for one capability. And we know that sometimes that can fail. And if that fails and people get a bad taste in their mouth for life safety. So what we do is we provide you that as a grant and hoping that everything goes really well at eight, or year nine, that you would renew your services with us for the long-term service maintenance.
Okay, and then we decide what happens as far as behavior or exiting parks or beaches or anything like that after the warnings go out? And that's up to us. You're just helping us do the warnings?
Correct. We'll, we'll work with the different stakeholders and department heads to make sure we all agree on some SOPs for the program. Because the program is also available to all of departments as well, not just the beach or the park. So that's something that we will work out once we get our meetings set up.
Any other questions or comments? Consent? Thank you very much. Seven point one, library, please.
Approved an extension of the interlocal agreement for library services in Pinellas County for an additional five years.
Good afternoon, my name's Jennifer Overmeyer, Library Director. The purpose and intent of this agreement is to continue to operate the Library Cooperative, otherwise known as PPLC, but to extend library services to the unincorporated areas of the county and to municipalities that do not have such services. Also, to improve library services to residents of municipalities and municipal services, taxing units with libraries as the date of this agreement. No changes were made, made to this five-year renewal.
Any questions or comments on this item? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, eight point one, please.
Designate a council member to serve as the city's official voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August tenth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Council members, it is that time of year where this, the council must designate a voting member or voting delegate for the annual conference. The annual meeting will occur on Saturday at nine AM during the conference. And it is that time where the election of the leadership, as well as the adoption of resolutions, are undertaken at that meeting. And typically, it's, the position is given to the individual who is attending. So I'm not sure which council member is attending the conference.
Who's attending? Because I'm not attending.
I'm not, I was not planning to attend.
Anyone else is planning to attend?
John Gomar?
Sure, I'll go.
Okay.
I will be there, so if there's any questions, I can help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, nine point one.
Mayor, just a couple of things briefly. One comment I wanted to make on the flood insurance item, or just more of a general observation on this. The legislature is phasing in a requirement that all homeowners obtain flood insurance. That is going to be a pretty significant change for a lot of our residents in coastal communities. You know, it is already a requirement that anyone who lives in a special flood hazard area have flood insurance if they have a mortgage associated with their property. However, many, and I would say the majority of our residents do not actually live in a special flood hazard area. And even those who do may not have a mortgage encumbering their properties. They may not have flood insurance currently. That requirement starts on January first of next year for properties valued at six hundred thousand dollars or more. And it will slowly come down over the next couple of years. So that means that over the next few years, more and more properties will be included. And eventually, within three years, all of our homeowners will be required to have flood insurance. And that is a legislative mandate. The reason I mention this is I do think that there's going to probably be some sticker shock in a lot of coastal communities, including ours, from residents as a result of this. You're probably going to get a lot of questions and a lot of concerns from residents as they start seeing these requirements getting phased in. So I think that kind of underscores the importance of this item for Atkins so that we can pursue as many remedies as possible to get our community rating system as good as possible with FEMA, which will translate into premium discounts for our residents. And so I know there's going to be a lot of questions from residents, but I think the answer correctly is that we're going to do everything we can to try to help keep their premiums down. But the requirement that they start getting flood insurance is a state requirement that we did not create. And so all we can do is help our residents try to mitigate their premiums to the extent possible. So I just want to make that as a comment. That's it. I just wanted to congratulate all of our new cadets, as well as Chief Mandy on his appointment as Chief of Police. Looking forward to working with all of them.
So anybody, even if you don't have a mortgage, you have to get flood insurance?
That will start to be a requirement, yeah, coming in as of January first.
I'm eighty-nine feet above sea level. Anyway, I'm going to flood as if my pool overflow is, even then, it's not going to do it.
The, this came.
It's not going to happen.
This came about as a result of Hurricane Ian because so much of the damage was inflicted in non-flood zone areas. And it's not just Ian, but we've seen that historically where sometimes there's a perception, I think, by a lot of homeowners throughout the state that if we don't live in a special flood area, that we're safe and that nothing's going to happen. The other issue that comes up, thanks to lawyers, is that oftentimes there is litigation. Right, we have everything on attorneys. There is oftentimes litigation that results where a homeowner will have property insurance that covers their normal homeowner's insurance, and it might cover, say, hurricanes, but it doesn't cover flooding because flood insurance is separate. And so it results in a lot of litigation involving, well, was it a hurricane or was it a flood? And this has driven up costs for everyone. And so the legislature, either wisely or unwisely, has determined that the best thing to do is make sure everyone has flood insurance. That will prevent a lot of those issues later on. So yes, it will start on January first, but it's going to be slowly phased in over a few years based on property values. So I know you're going to get questions about that from residents. And so, you know, we'll do everything we can to try to help our residents out.
I can, I can tell you right now, we just, all, all insurances have tripled. Homeowner's insurance, ours doubled, and that didn't include flood. It may include hurricane, but you know, talk to the insurance company and they're like, well, there may be some finger pointing, you know, whether the damage was done by water or wind. And there always is, so it's, it's a big thing. If you live in Florida, insurance has come up to as number one thing to really be concerned about.
Okay, thank you. All right, rest your other items, nine point one.
I think everything else is either second or third reading. We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on any of these items for the attorney? No, okay, let's go to city manager verbal reports.
Good afternoon. I did want to advise the council, the mayor and council, that our agreement that we are negotiating with a vendor as it relates to recycling has been reduced to writing, and it is with their legal team. So the next steps after it comes out of their legal department will be to come over and go through our legal department and through the agenda approval process. So we still are on time for it to be on the next meeting. And as a reminder, per council direction, that at that time, we will also have the conversation about recycling credits and/or refunds.
Okay.
Outside of that, I too wanted to welcome our new chief and our new police cadets. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for either the attorney or city manager? Okay, thank you. City Attorney verbal reports?
None.
Council discussion item, Councilmember Beckman.
Yeah, I just, I had a follow-up about what Mr. Margolis was saying about the requirement for flood insurance. So I know that our rating, I think, is a six. And our residents get twenty percent reduction on their flood insurance. The county has like a three, and I think it's thirty-five percent. So we can learn from the county what they're doing, meaning better understand how they got. I think they're the lowest in the state, which is interesting. But I think that, you know, we'll, as Sarah Kessler said, we've got that consultant working with us to get our numbers lowered as much as possible that gets passed down to our residents, right?
Yes, I think that's a lot of the objective. And I will say that the county is in a somewhat different position than we are because of the topography. You know, county, you know, countywide is so different than our city. So it may be that some of the things that county, the county is doing may not be easily duplicated within the city. But the consultant is going to have to let us know. Certainly, the objective is to maximize, you know, our points and get our rating to the best possible so we can get our residents the best discount possible.
Right. And you said, just to clarify, I think you said it, but I wasn't, didn't hear totally clearly. It's going to start at six hundred thousand, whether you have a mortgage or not? Everyone's paying whether you have a mortgage or not?
Starting January first, if your property value exceeds six hundred thousand dollars, that will start to be a requirement.
Okay, and the flood insurance obviously has to cover the value of the home.
Yeah, I mean, there is some question over, when you get into the insurance world, it gets complicated when you start talking about how valuation works because there is replacement value, there's actual cash value, things like that. And so some of that rulemaking is still going to be, have to be fleshed out. It's a, it's pretty comprehensive legislation. And so a lot of the implications of it, I think, will not be fully felt, for better or for worse, you know, for some time as it, as it goes through. it, as it goes through.
Okay. So a couple of things I had on new business for future meetings, not necessarily the very next meeting, but future meetings. Kind of an update on where we are with the sound ordinance, perhaps discussion of artificial turf ordinance. I know we've had some different emails and communications about that. I've communicated with our residents that I've asked the Tampa Bay Estuary Program Board that I sit on to give an overview of their feelings of artificial turf and chemicals and makeup and construction. So they're going to do that at my next meeting, which I think is the 18th of August, so I can report back on that. And then an update on state legislation specific to, you know, our operations here in Clearwater and budgetary implications, the Live Local Act. There's an, you know, economic impact of the ordinance change where we have to report out economic impacts of any ordinance changes, what that really might look like or how we're preparing for that. And then I'd like at some point to have an overview and discussion of some of our zoning requirements, especially in medium-density residential. And here's why. I, you know, we got invited to a home dedication on August 11th, and so I was in, it's in the North Greenwood neighborhood, and I was driving around and saw it, and it's a beautiful home, but it's on this huge lot that I'm like, wow, that, first of all, that's a lot for our family to take care of, and number two, how come we don't have a duplex, triplex, or two homes there? And so part of it, as I'm starting to learn, and I'm certainly not an expert, but, you know, we have different requirements of setbacks and all that stuff in, in an MDR to increase density. And in talking to these workforce housing developers, it can be like a three to four month process and costs anywhere between 2,000 and 6,000 to get approval for flexibility for more density in an MDR-zoned area. So I wanted to understand a little more why that is. Can we do anything to make it easier for these affordable home developers, workforce home developers, to get flexibility without passing on that cost to the people who are buying those homes? So that's, that's something I want to learn more about. And I think it'd be good for all of us to understand, unless you all know already.
All right, thank you. Any other? All right. Any new business? Any new business other than? No? All right. On the close, I would concur with the attorney and city manager that congratulations to Chief Candy, and congratulations to our cadets. We look forward to them having long careers, and we look forward to working with the chief and our entire police department. Good meeting. We'll see everyone on Thursday. We're adjourned.